And that's it, records at the end. I put talk recording.
No, 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 that's the, that's the.
Yeah, okay, I don't have that one on my.
Oh, this one.
I think there's at least.
Yes.
I will check on that.
Assemble. Nola, do you want to lead our indications?
Sure. Father, I just thank you for the opportunity to be before the board once again today. God, representing the Institutes of Dalton Township, Holy Spirit, we need your help and wisdom, understanding, God, help us to be decisive with the land sales, the bids and everything that's going toward in this space, Father. We, we just thank you for guiding us and all truth in Jesus' name. Man?
Man? Motion for the budget, which?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you want to roll call for a straight.
Ola, here. Christie, here. Jeffrey.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Tracy is here. Michael is abs.
Next, we have approval of the agenda, if we'd motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Lee, we have sports.
Sport.
Sport by Nola, discussion among the board. Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes, we have three, one from March 11th and two from 23rd. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting?
Make a motion to approve all three reading minutes?
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support by Christie, and a discussion among the board. Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have the report. Questions? Do we place it in our front? Next, we have paying the bills. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support by Lee, and discussion among the board. Are you none, roll call vote?
Ola, yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Motion passes, next, we have the private department report, if you would chief.
It's a very, uh, information I like to leave as soon as finished, we're training up.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, sixty-four requests for service last month, again, working through some stuff with, you know, company first due with our reporting software. Long in depth meeting today with them. We're getting a little closer, not getting where we want to get yet. Yeah, to understand this again through the dispatch layer, so it's fifteen agencies that I have to try and deal with. Not all of us do it the same, so, uh, but to be specific to what we need is taking a little longer than, uh, I would like to show my frustrations more about it, but let's business card, I'll get, I guess. Thank you. We did finalize everything with full-time staff, they started next week, uh, things have gone insanely well, uh, with maybe a large insound Saturday that I won't discuss with anyone, but, you know, everybody knows about it. Uh, but the staff did amazing, uh, response times, but I can track our, our phenomenal throughout the door in, in a minute, a minute and a half. I even though I, uh, we did go through and change a bunch of our administrative orders and SOPs and SOGs, uh, due to the full-time staffing, but it definitely has gone quite well. Uh, as you notice, uh, phase two has started now of the construction for the warehouse carpet and interior is all done. Uh, they are now working on the sopit fascia, uh, inciting, uh, you will notice they've replaced all the wood on the building. Uh, after twenty-five years of a not-so-great design, all that wood was rotting, which I wasn't sure it was going to be, so, uh, we're not working for that contingent plan, so, yeah, it's fine. But once that's done, uh, and that phase is finished, which they're hoping will be our weather, which is supposed to rain, uh, whatever, uh, they're hoping to be done by the end of the week, uh, that should hold that building now until long after I'm dead, so. Last, uh, other thing I had to then, uh, the staff wanted to thank, uh, the citizens and, again, staff and board, uh, for everything that they've done to help make them feel welcome. They've gone through their first cycle, now there's a second cycle and things are going well, uh, we've caught a bunch of things that were hard to catch before, um, so it's been nothing but, but phenomenal. It's, it's been a blessing. So I feel like now I can call it up at all again because now I'm going in a different route, trying to do the things that you really hired me to do. So it's been, uh, been a little different, been a little different for me to not have to jump up and, and run every call, uh, it's been, been kind of a blessing. I think I slept like six hours for first time solids since like nineteen eighty-four or something. I woke up until I got the date, but I'm, I'm starting to, I was like, well, this is too long to sleep, so.
You'll get used to it.
Not really. I was up three thirty, it's actually crazy, but, um, got some big projects coming up that's going to do with some training. Been working with, uh, Chief Ambrose from Skeeter County Township and Chief Petrie from White Lake. Chief, uh, McCarthy from White Lake, uh, to try and get some things, uh, lined up for some corporate training. Obviously, uh, we go to that and they go to us, it's kind of a, a share alike thing, uh, they're all transitioning through some of their own internal things, uh, while we're certainly trying to transition forward. Though we are still struggling with some of the UMS stuff, uh, that again, we can't control, can't control what, what, uh, the healthcare system wants to be. I just ask the citizens to try to, to, uh, be proactive and understand that, that we're the first line of defense. I can't control what happens at the hospital, um, I can try sometimes, but please understand that just because you call us doesn't mean you're gonna get right in, you know, I've had people wait hours and, and hopefully that's something I can fix. Uh, I can't fix the response times for the ambulance company, um, they'll get there when they get there. That, that process with the calls has changed a little bit, we're, we're giving them now, uh, we're getting notified at least of some of those calls that are now, as they consider a lower priority, I know to the citizens, every, every time they call nine one, it's an emergency, I can understand that. I just have to, they have to understand that we're only as limited as we want to go, because we want to go a different route, I can tell you right now, we don't want to go that route because it kill us financially in a, by a month, it's, it's, if we want to start an ambulance company in our insurance station now, we have to ask for a half million dollars. That's every year, just to run the ambulance. And really get a half million dollars a year running the entire operation, so. That, that's something that's, it's out there, but that's what Chief Ambrose and myself and, and Chief McCarthy are sitting down trying to find alternative ways, uh, we don't know yet, it's, it's, uh, I don't think this will be fixed before my career is over, I just don't, I think that the way to help it is going. We're stuck in this and, and as a thirty-year veteran, I hate it, uh, it's, I wish I could fix it, snap my fingers, I can't, it's, it's just not gonna work. But we're staying positive, uh, the things we're doing have, have moved us up, uh. I, I think you're gonna see, um, our organization get much stronger and in that, being the community, we're gonna be out in the community more, uh, we're gonna start doing, uh, the guys have talked, they want to do pleads and surveys, we're gonna come out to businesses and introduce ourselves. It's not a inspection or a fine, it's a, hey, what can we do to make you safer? But how can we help you out, not a punishment, any way to perform, I will not do that, I refuse to do that, um. I, I won't, I won't punish people for trying to do the right thing. It is made, I know, and again, we're not gonna go in with a, with a autocratic, I, I do, we're gonna go in with a democratic attitude of, hey, what can we do to make it easier for you? I'm not gonna pay for things, but I'll help you find an easier way, right, it's, it's, that's what we have to do. And that's where a lot of my focus is gonna go now, is back to where it really, uh, shouldn't even, um, the board hired me fifteen years ago now, almost, God's coming quick. To, yeah, it is just, it's, it's month. I'm glad we're having fun, um, but it, but it's been, it's been a blessing, that, everything we're doing. Again, I, I thank you as the staff does for everything you've done for us, it's been just a, a career ride. Don't lay at the end of the tone yet, it might be odd, but it's, it's not there yet. I can see it, but it's not real right, so, it's like the eclipse, closer, closer. Fancy, but it's in here. The last thing we have is, um, we, we have opted not to, uh, how to say this, we've opted to, uh, transitions from our, our software information, uh, with, with Heather and Evie, doing some of our transition, doing some of our reporting stuff that we do thoroughly, uh, to their, they created some stuff in our dry source and we're gonna continue to use that, and I wanted to thank the office staff for a lot of meetings, to borrow them for, for a few hours here and there, and come time to meet, you need to help us, uh, move forward, the staff were grateful that it, that uh, they're way smarter than we are, because we're just dumb firemen, they can make cool things happen, sorry. We, we struggled for a couple of weeks and they came in in like ten minutes and that, so I just wanted to, to, to record public record that I appreciate, I think Heather and Evie did to help, uh, help us transition, it was, it was huge, it took a, a load off of me like you wouldn't know, you've so much of a load and we're engaged today, so, it's, it's kind of nice, I know, it works, so, thank you Heather for that you did. So, other than that, if I may be excused, that's all.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you folks, have a great.
Next, we have the planning permission reports, if you would need.
Yeah, we met March twenty-sixth, um, first item was a public hearing SU twenty-four dash zero-two, under bird waste rate wave extended hours. Later on in our meeting here, um, the discussion is based about the ability of the racetrack to go past their eleven p.m. per few. Um, it's mainly to, it's mainly for if there's a weather event or crashes keeping their, um, keeping the races going longer than the schedule. Um, they won't be able to start a race after eleven, but it's just the ability to finish. This is what, if I remember correctly, um, there are no formal complaints made to the township last year regarding the, the same issue, it came, it's been like this last three years, same extension, um, as motions for approval for the township board. Second was, uh, site plan review twenty-four dash zero-two for J and J Farm Sales. Um, they're looking at building a sixty-by-twenty service building, um, for more service area and storage for equipment. It'll, it won't be open to the public, it'll still be their main building, this will just be more for them for servicing equipment, um, motion approved. Um, third was site plan review twenty-four dash zero-three, um, Twin Lake Ace Hardware has put in an EV, or would like to put in the EV charging station. There was a brief explanation of the charging station from a representative for the charging company, because it's gonna be like a almost like the charging company is putting in, but Ace, it owns the land, so it's kind of like a combo deal, but motion approved for that. Fourth, and the agenda was a draft ordinance for home-based business and home occupation. We just reviewed the draft that Steve prepared with, uh, changes from our previous meetings, um, that were discussed, motion approved. Um, and our last item was a, item on the five-year five-year review of the master plan, um, and we'll continue reviewing that over the coming months.
Thank you. Next, we have the planning zoning reports, if you would, Steve.
In March, we approved nine permits, uh, two of which were new houses. In regards to enforcement actions, we investigated fifteen cases and six portfolios. We are reviewing the master plan, currently scheduled for a, uh, April twenty-third meeting, to just review the master plan, I'm preparing an analysis of the plan and our current conditions as well. That is all for planning and signing.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have the parks and recreation committee reports, this is the first time, because they had their first meeting, uh, Michael is our liaison with them, he went down to see the actual eclipse a little south of us, which is why he isn't here. But I have included the reports that he wrote in the board packet, several things there, the board members were sworn in, there was discussion about the overall idea of what parks we have, uh, the five-year plan, looking forward, that type of thing. Two real decisions were made, one was to collect quotes about the M one twenty Christmas tree, to have a backup in case the, the person, the citizen we have in the township that's looking at it, doesn't do it, so those are being collected. And then, the issue we went have with dogs at some of the parks, and so we now have a dog dump station out at a field as an experiment, I don't know if that will make the problem better or worse, it'll probably do one of the two. Uh, so it'll be a good experiment to see if it needs to, uh, spread to other places, and then a meeting was set up for on the twenty-ninth, a special meeting, and then two months from there on out, starting the next month. Next, we have visiting official and candidate updates, I do not believe we have any visiting officials in the room, uh, do we have any candidates that would like to about running for office, I'm gonna have it available because we're going into that time of year.
My name's Heather Cooley, and I put in to run for Dalton Township Supervisor.
Yay.
Good speech. Very straightforward into the points.
Yeah, it's good. Brevity's good.
Because you did it.
Okay, I love it. Same words.
Good and all reason. Jean Kooi. K O O I, not Cooley.
Right.
And, uh, I put in my name to run for one of the open spots as trustee.
All right.
Thank you. Any other candidates in the room?
I guess, I guess I'm just, I'll just say I'm.
You can say that you're a candidate.
Want me to go down there, up here?
Same for me.
I guess I already heard my guess, but I'm, I'm gonna, um, run again, too, just, uh, let everybody know.
Right, anyone else?
I'm not a valid as well. Also, you're not a valid for me for another term.
And I will too. I guess it's real doing it.
I'm not.
It's easier than that.
Which, I like.
But can I say something too? You know, like, I, I came in here and it was right after our maintenance guy just like left, and lovely Heather was in the back maintenance getting all greasy and filthy dirty, because she's out there sorting through things. And later that day, I'm driving down Restarone, I'm passing cemetery, and who's out at the cemetery pulling branches out? Heather. It's like, for me, I want somebody in this position that is really for our community, that cares about our community, I'm like, she should get a bonus for doing that extra stuff, you know, and so, I'm proud of you, Heather. Thank you.
Next, we have our first public comment, so we have several things out here that could be controversies, several things that we expect not to be. But as always, I expect some of the things that I expect to be controversies to not be controversies, and some of the things I expect to not be controversies could be controversial. So, if you would like to speak on any of the free lane deals that we have going on, road running, I assume that would be some sort of complaints, but if you want to speak on that, you could. Uh, the thunder bar time extension or the discussion about Jason Pay at the end, feel free to come on up and let us know your thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns. Sure.
Sure.
Okay. And moving on to the separate items, so, we have the land bid opening on East Street, uh, the former Civic Center site in Twin Lake, we put it up for a minimum bid of eight thousand dollars. In the last meeting, we have five bids that came in on this piece. So, I will open them, I'll open them in time. All right, so the first one is, please accept this bid for the East Street land sale, we hope to get the property rezoned to C two and to build a building, the house and our office and warehouse space, it would add to the non-homestead taxes for the township, thank you for your consideration, bid amount of nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars. First one. That's, I, I'm gonna claim that, that's weak paper.
Got the time, we need to.
I do, I work out, but. Timer broke, all right, but, still, we will check that bid, all right, the timer broke, I threw that away as well. Now, now because I pulled that two up. Love mount for this one is ten thousand one hundred and one dollars, says cash payment, third-generation Twin Lake resident would love to purchase this property to build a house up. Trying to keep the scraps together. This includes a requesting information on our policy on the land as well, as well as a purchase rate, that's why the paper is so large. All right, purchase price, buyer offers to pay to buy the property for the sum of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Yep.
They're expecting.
This one, don't, I mean, there's a lot of paper here, so it might explicitly say it here? Oh, all right, other provisions. One offer subject to buyer receiving approval to build one duplex on-site from Dalton Township in the Skeaton County Health Department. So the offer is subject to buyer receiving approval. Township land bid for vacant parcel, this is twelve thousand six hundred twenty dollars and eighteen cents. And this will be the final.
For what? Yeah, did they say the one before, say what it was for?
And. It does not.
It does not? Okay.
I, I get the idea of having sealed bids, it'd be nice for golden before and I could draw up a little sheet, apparently, but. And I hear by bid ten thousand three hundred dollars cash for the parks. What specific use on that, so, it's quite a bit, so the first one we had, uh, for an office warehouse space, nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Uh, second one, we had third-generation residence to build house, ten thousand one hundred and one. The third one, we had subject to approval for a duplex, that was twelve-five. The fourth one, we have a bill of bidding for twelve thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, doesn't explicitly state use, and the fifth one is ten thousand three hundred. So lots of options there.
So I don't think we can accept, uh, the bid on the duplex with the contingency.
With the subject two, because you wouldn't be able to close until you got approval, but we wouldn't be able to go through our process for approval until we closed that soon. Right, so it puts us in like a weird limbo state, you could do a subject two normally, if you're buying a piece of property from someone, some, some person. That was, yeah, probably a little different with us, for it to make sense.
Is that currently zoned?
We allow duplexes there, Steve?
Yes, it is zoned R two, and it's one acre, so it would be allowed one duplex.
Thank you.
So.
What about office warehouse?
It would need to be rezoned, and the.
Do you listen to?
Person who submitted the request did, the bid did say that it would be, it would request rezoning.
Right, so they're aware of that.
Bid number four was the twelve thousand six twenty-eight and eighteen cents. So that's the highest.
And the ten thousand one hundred one is a third-generation family. My heart always goes towards that, it does.
So, it's a decent sentiment as a person, so, we're not for specific township interests sometimes, you know?
I know. Township.
It's a little different, but. Yeah, so, I mean, thoughts, we, that subject two, even though it's allowed use on there with the duplex, it doesn't mean it'd be approved right away, it does mean, it doesn't. But with a duplex, would it need to go through the planning questioner, or is it?
No, it's by right.
So it would just be, it's by rights, you have, so it has to meet all the zoning requirements.
But it's not, yeah, that was not the highest bid either.
It's not, and so, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have the highest, and it could be a little odd or a little complex with the subject two. We have another one for over twelve. We have two in the tens, one just under ten. So, the second really got bid up, a lot of interest in it. And the highest bid that we have, twelve thousand six hundred twenty dollars and eighteen cents, that doesn't explicitly say use. It's so residential, as is now, so it'd be one of those uses unless there was an attempt at rezoning.
So, I guess, I don't know if I can say I'm front of it here, but I was the ten thousand three hundred dollar bid, um, for that property, I, as well, I've been in Twin Lake my whole life, my kids reside here, couple houses. And basically what I'm doing is I just put my retirement, started something new, so I'm looking to, and invest my retirement into something I can either sell or duplex, which I informed about the other day when I was here before I put a bid in, to see if there's something that, that I could just invest my retirement into something that's gonna pay me, uh, this way. So, that was my bid of ten thousand three hundred, that's what I was gonna do with it, if I didn't do a duplex, I would just probably have to do a home or something like that, but I utilize the property in some way.
Yeah, good. Anyone else, since we do have fire, the board is a little undecided on it, do we have anyone else?
Tom Russell.
Do we have anyone else that wanted to make public comment that has interest in this property? Probably not about the community center, I know we've moved on to other property. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for twelve thousand six hundred twenty dollars and eighteen cents.
All right, motion by Tracy, for the high bid.
I support the high bid.
Support by Scott, any discussion among the board?
We maintain these then, in case that falls through.
Well, we'll keep them if that ended up falling through, I don't think we've had a closing actually fall through. No, we haven't, we haven't had one of fall through, so, but the board would have to make that decision, because we don't make like a backup acceptance, so I'd have to break it back to the board for approval and some way. Any, any other discussion? Your number, roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ola, yes. Christie? Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the land sale request on East Lakewood. So this is the first step for this, we're looking at it, if we want to put it up for bid, and if we put it up for bid, how we want to come up with information to allow us to set a minimum in the next meeting. and if we put it up for bid, how we wanna come up with information to allow us to set a minimum in the next meeting.
Five acres and seven.
Yep, five acres, and basically if you go up, because there's two sections of Lakewood that get confused, is if you go up Staple and then come west off of Staple on that section of Lakewood Road, basically you go past where the subdivision ends, and it's just a little ways down there.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's its own.
Over.
Two track right now, then.
Do you get finally out to this property yet?
They, they've upgraded their road a little bit. There's a house further past.
That's right, yep.
It doesn't show on the GIS, it showed that it's on Google Maps.
Right, yeah, someone to build to the north. Track. So.
I'll make a motion to approve land sale 2024-3 and use the true cash value from the assessor and realtor comparables to consider setting the bid up there.
All right, motion by Tracy, supported by Noah, any other discussion among the board? There are none, roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christie?
Christie.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the road rining contract, comes up every year, and this, I had estimated about 25 grands. Not having the private roads in there, I came back just a couple of grand over there, about 27. So, and then plus the private roads, which we have special assessments for, a lot of people know about that controversy. Sure it'll come up against. But I think it makes the most sense to know this way. In the past, when the township has tried to do their own rining contracts, it hasn't gone well. Now, let's think, when a number of years, we didn't, they didn't go that great, and they end up switching back to the road division.
Isn't there a lot of complaints about their roads not even getting rained?
Yeah.
Well, I get complaints on all of the dirt roads. All the time, people hate the roads. Just as a general policy.
Had to do with the weather, I remember it happened to do with the weather, and when it rained, and if they put it on, it would literally be wasting thousands of dollars. When they were waiting, so that would just launch it all away, so they waited and waited, and then when it was dry enough, they did it, but then it was drying up for dust, I think we were too nervous.
Yeah, I think you could basically run and win as governor, just on a road campaign.
I can't speak.
I make a motion to.
Yes, I'm all right. Motion by Noah, who's the support?
Me.
Tracy, any other discussion among the board? There are none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Christie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. It passes. Mary, she's about that, so I can decide right away, give it over to her, so we won't be the delay, at least. I don't think that'll stop the complaints, but. Next, we have the land sale request on Lakewood Road and Russell Road. This is our first one since passing the policy that over 10 acres, we want to see a proposal. So this is the first proposal with a request that we're explicitly stating that we need. This one's obviously for housing. Decent amount of documentation, and then for the idea in here. And let me know if it's here, if you wanna speak on it.
Yeah, your question.
So if we have any questions, take that. It's the first meeting again for this, it'll go through another two steps like this.
And I'll make a motion to put land sale 2024-2 using the true cash value along with an assessor for the current market variables, the realtor.
Okay. Motion by Noah, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Christie, any other discussion among the board? It'll be, we'll see if we end up getting any other proposals. And so now that, you know, it's becoming more known, if there are other proposals, I'll try to get something comparable, put decent amount of information, and see out one of the next, the next two meetings, if anyone ends up being there. All right, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tracy, yes?
Motion passes. Next, we have the Thunderbird time extension, we mentioned this in the planning commission meeting. And this has come up over the last three years, it's supposed to be a temporary thing. Doesn't, doesn't seem to get too controversial, but it's a little controversial. It's odd when they implemented this, they excluded the motorsports in a, in a special way. So it goes through a little bit of a different process, we have a different authority on it, which is kind of odd. Be nice to, at some point, bring that in, into alignment with the other, the way the other ones, since the approvals work. As it is now, it's set up like last year, there was some debate in the planning commission office, but it's set up for having everything ending, latest at 11:45.
Motion to approve the 2024 resolution, so now is it Thunderbird, right, Scott?
Motion by Noah, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Tracy, any other discussion among the board? There are none, roll call votes.
Noah?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Motion passes. Next, we have our discussion item, and this is on adjacent board email and payment. I called that just to cover the board, specifically came up with parks and recreation. One of the members had wanted to help draw up the request for proposals, which of course had good. We've had other people, trustees, a couple of times, some people on the planning commission, not so much in the zoning board of appeals, but if they wanna do like a little bit more, essentially. Essentially, consider that to fall under the meeting pay or some version of volunteer basis. And so, I mean, specifically inquired into though, when driving out to the Christmas tree, kind of check it out, if one of those board members is putting in a lot of time, are they getting paid for that? Under current policies, I said no, that's why I bring it to the board. And then also emails, and when I wrote this on Wednesday, I didn't have an update on the emails or how exactly that would work necessarily. I inquired with dispatch about it, we can add other side emails, trustees can have emails, whatever it is, that wouldn't have access to the shared drive, so you just kind of end up with an email, and it's $5 per email per month, they would charge us for those little side ones, essentially. So there's really, there's two issues there. The first one is the idea of having emails for anyone on parks or rec, planning commission, whoever would request it. The other one is if they start doing work, do we pay them?
Then they become an employee.
That's, that's the thing, so there, which we have, I mean, the supervisor is on board and is employed, right? Something like that, right? It does end up, it does end up being a little odd, if they are operating like staff or like employees. We have staff, so who's, who exactly is directing them, how exactly is that working? Are we limiting their pay, are we limiting their hours? Can just, if someone that's on the planning commission that needs some extra cash, can they just come in and do some time researching something that makes some extra money? Like, how exactly, how exactly would that work, where are the? Because I don't want me just deciding like, oh yeah, you work hard at this, here's some money. Right, that, that wouldn't work out great. And so we should have some sort of idea on, are we going in this direction? Which means we should have a policy that clarifies all that stuff, or we can operate like we've been operating, that hey, if you wanna put in a little time helping with whatever, great. There's no, there's no additional pay, you're essentially volunteer, or you could prorate your hours, then you get paid per median if you wanna feel like you're getting paid for it. So there's, I mean, there's an upside and a downside to it.
I think the email can get a little, could get a little out of hand, if we just automatically assign, you know, set them up for people. Because then we have to take them off, and, you know, the dealing with.
Dispatch?
Dealing with dispatch, and getting the, you know, getting them to be able to get on their phones, and, you know.
And dispatch is touchy about the security issues.
Right.
This is not, this computer is not connected to the network, because they didn't want one that, here, it's connected to the wifi like public. They didn't want one in this room that someone could walk in and hack into their system, so they're, they're touchy about that.
Yeah, I guess, well, who, just somebody on the committee that brought that up?
Right, and, yeah, because he was drawing up the RFP for the Christmas tree, which the RFP is very nice. We, we sent them out, bailed them out to some tree companies, and he did a really good job on it. And so he was inquiring into how exactly this works.
Yes, yeah, I guess, because you want it to be more official to the people that it's sent in to, is that what he was thinking?
As far as the email goes, he had asked about coming in, and so I put him at a computer, the one that we use for the assessor on Mondays, the enforcer on Tuesdays. He'd come in, and I signed into it and just set him up on there. And, yeah, I think the idea, there's, on the RFP, the request for proposals, there's a section of who do you contact? He said, who should I be having them contact? And I said, you can put down my information if you want, I'm going to be not in the country, I'm gonna be in England at that time, so it doesn't make sense for me to necessarily be there contacting. So Tracy is going to be here, ended up putting her contact information on there. But if he had an email, it could have been here, but he wouldn't, he also wouldn't have an internal phone number.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have a string of phones like a boiler room along the wall somewhere, so that would be odd.
Same.
And we still, we put down, I put down Tracy's direct line, her email, that's how I ended up doing it.
We could do something like they do at CPA and Planning Commission, where there's a $25 stipend for a site review, so.
A site visit.
Or a site visit, yeah, so we, if that's something, because I, I think we would want to encourage the planning commission to, or, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Committee to do site viewing, and, so we could implement something like that.
And we do already have that in place with the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. They wanna go visit a specific place in the paper they can fill out, so it'd be comparable.
I think that's reasonable. If the planning commission already had that, I mean, and Parks and Recreation should probably be going up in parks and recreation areas to check out what they're gonna be building on, or whatever, so.
Yeah, see what the dialogue's looking like.
I guess that, so same, I'd, I think Dave, Dave and, uh, do that a lot together.
Yeah, visit, visit some of the places, I think they've turned in some sheets before. And I think it's just there as an incentive for people to engage, especially parks and recreation, most likely people use a view, but not all of them, it could be odd to do the full spread.
I have, I thought Phil would know, I've been, I, usually some just driving past some of the things or whatever, that.
Right, just.
It's not gonna fill it out, but I mean, I guess you could, if you really wanted to, fill it out, do that. It's got something for you, I guess, but at least it's there, the upper place there, if you want, feel like you need it.
So it seems like we're saying just have a site view, site visiting form that's filled out for the extra fee comparable to the part of the planning commission, the CPA. Is there anyone that has a different opinion or view, or think it should be structured differently?
I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, because that should be no problem, we'd probably copy the form and change the header on it. Good to go.
Where's that budget, what's, is that budget by, is that?
And actually, we'll have in the quarterly budget adjustment, we made sure to update on wages and salaries so that we're paying our Parks and Recreation members. We did not add those fees into an extra line under Parks and Recreation. So I think that's the only note I have for an obvious quarterly budget adjustment in July for June.
I guess to answer the, the questions that it hasn't for planning commission and CPA, it doesn't add up to an exorbitant amount of money.
Almost anything, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for time, I know on that.
They turn them, they turn them in the day of the meeting.
Good, so.
So like, then they.
Get stack of boxes.
Yeah.
Pay your taxes with them, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we haven't had any issue of anyone trying to game that system. We haven't even had that intention, obviously, if we had someone trying to do something like that, we'd have to reel it back in quickly.
Like for the year, on the stipend per year?
No, per.
Maybe?
Agenda item.
Per agenda.
So if he went four places, he could get four. Yes.
Stipends?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we haven't had an issue with that, with the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. If someone obviously wanted to game that system, then they could, but there's a real possibility that we would remove them from that board.
Right, yeah. Right, it, it's not, they're not driving by, they're getting out, they're talking to the neighbors or the person, or, you know, they're writing notes. There's, there's a, they fill out the form and put notes on it.
Because if someone came and they turned in like, hey, here's my $300 that you owe me for visits this month to different places. We'd, we'd probably see that at a board meeting vote for the next meeting.
Yeah, it seems like, just, just an example to that, I think Dave and Todd, like they go into more of, like if there is multiple items, they only go to maybe like one, like the more like.
If they have more questions on it.
More questions around, where, most of them are fairly simple or whatever, like. That's whatever, like, things are more complicated or whatever, just, that's all they go to. So it's not like they go to everyone to get a site plan, or a site review thing, kind of, you know.
Yeah. Okay, so it's just the ones that may be controversial, usually.
Yeah, like, like you said, I guess, somebody's like, don't want to have, it's like one all the time.
Good, all right, I think we're set on that then. Next, second public slash board comment, do we have any public that wants to comment on anything?
Here in Fowler, 2769 Little Lake Road, I just like to thank the members of the board for coming to our library, the Maddel Library meeting that was held at Dalton Township. And the director was very impressed at, at our meeting, and said it's one of the nicest meetings. He, that two sets, he became the director, so I appreciate your attendance, man, a lot.
From the back row. Anything?
That was pretty important to me, as you can tell.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, and that was, that participation, when they have taken the show on the road to the different places. I had several board members say that they haven't had too many people show up, except for here, so.
I dragged some of those people, like.
All right, last call. Any board comment before we take off? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lee, any discussion among the board? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We can adjourn.